Okay, good morning, everyone. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law, under COVID-19 emergency declaration, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions, under the purview of the City Planning Department, conduct its meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a lack of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting had the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activate it by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. Calling users can unmute by using star six. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. We have provided a link to the meeting for those who wish to speak on a particular case via our website and email. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Mr. Chairman, the meeting is yours.
Thank you. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Present.
Downing.
Present.
Lucker. Curry.
Present.
Paul.
Present.
Slade.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Everyone's here today. Great. A special presentation, public art platform building mural. Tara, you're gonna start this off?
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Tara Peters, Public Art Coordinator for the city of Cleveland. This first project that's coming to you is a mural project in Ward 14 in the Clark Fulton neighborhood. It's a collaboration with Metro West Development Corporation and artist Natalie Bermudez. It is not in a design review district, so it's coming straight to you all for approval. And it is a mural, a series of murals covering a building owned by Platform Brewery on Sackett Avenue. I'm in full support of this project and I'm going to turn it over to Susan Underwood to go through the slides with you. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
I guess I'll just go through, we'll go through the slides and then if I missed anything, I'll follow up with any extra information and your questions. This is, this mural is part of Creative Fusion, but it's also on a building that faces a new community garden in the Clark Fulton neighborhood. And it's also a building owned by Platform, so it's kind of a collaboration of sorts. This is...
Suzy, I forgot that this was a project that was funded by the Cleveland Foundation that I was involved in, so I should recuse myself.
Thank you, Lilian.
Yes, yes, Creative Fusion from Cleveland Foundation. So yeah, we've been doing kind of a lot of things that cover multiple goals with this project. So the artist here is Natalie Bermudez. She's originally from Columbia. She's lived in Cleveland, I think, for about five years. So very exciting to be getting some of her work out there. She's got some some original mural work already over at Baroko and she lives pretty close to the neighborhood. And one of the features that she likes to celebrate in her work is indigenous cultures of Latin America and in her own home country. You can progress. The building is, so if you go just directly west of the main Platform Funkenship Building, there on Sackett Avenue, there's this little building across the parking lot that used to be a little boxing school. It's, must have been a very tight boxing school. Currently, they're just using it for storage, but it will eventually get turned into an outdoor bar. But that parking lot there gets used for patio seating and it's right next to where they've got a volleyball court. And then, so you can see this on the left side, that's the east facing what it used to look like. Now the east facing what it looks like now that they painted it black. And then in the last picture, that's the wall that faces the new community garden. Where you can see, we've got a giant pile of dirt. We gotta, they have to cart away because they're leveling the garden, which is going to be called the San Cocho Garden. So you can progress. And these are just some wider context shots, so you can just kind of see if you're facing east on Sackett. I'm kind of standing close to West 33rd there. You can see the big Platform Building way there in the distance. The other building that's to the left is also owned by Platform. It's just a big warehouse that they're just using for storage right now. And then you can see the smaller black building. And then the middle shot, if you're facing west from Funkenship Building, you can kind of see where they got like tables and the volleyball court and where they set up in that kind of either parking lot or patio, depending on how they're using it. And then the last shot, you can see the other side, the garden side of the building where you've got the fence that blocks it off so that people can't wander from the bar over there. But that's just some more context shots for how you can see the building. You can progress. And then this is just kind of the measurements of the building that Platform gave me. You can progress. And just a little background on the San Cocho Community Garden, which is kind of the inspiration for the mural content. So John Paul Hernandez, his parents live right there on the corner of Sackett and West 33rd. He grew up in the neighborhood. He's partnering, you know, collaborating with Platform. Two of the plots are owned by his family. The other plot is a land bank lot managed by Platform. And it's, so it's quite a large community garden that they're starting. And, you know, we are working with a lot of partners and community members. So it will be a really wonderful space for the community just in that same Platform area. And so a lot of people that come to the garden will get to see this beautiful mural. And we'll be hosting one of our locations for our annual Painting a Better Picture event in that garden, which is funded by the Councilman Jasmine Santana's Ward 14 office. Just a little context for that garden. You can progress. So these are some shots of her mural sketches there. So this is the south side of the building, which is kind of the side that faces the volleyball court and where the fence is. So it's kind of tucked away, but you can still see it if you're back there playing volleyball or on the patio. Progress. And then this is the side facing Sackett, so the north side of the building. So if you drove by on Sackett, you would see this side. You can progress. And then this is the west side facing the garden. So for anybody that's in the garden, this will be the beautiful view that they will get from the garden as well. And you can progress. And then she did more of a abstract design for this side because Platform will be busting out some of these areas to make, to have garage doors that lift up for service. So they are gonna be busting into the building a little bit. But since she's doing more of just like an abstract design, it shouldn't be a problem with... So we're going into it knowing that there will be just some of those changes to the doorways in the building. And this is the side that faces. And then you can progress. So the materials, she was gonna use a lot of spray paint, high-quality Montana spray paint. And then also some latex Sherwin-Williams paint, exterior, high-quality. And then at the end, we're going to use the Sherwin-Williams anti-graffiti coating over the mural to protect it from graffiti tagging. And since it's owned by Platform, you know, they will assume responsibility of the building after that. But we can also be on hand to, you know, help with any repairs related to the mural. And Natalie lives locally too, so that's kind of the maintenance plan. You can progress. And I think that is it.
Thank you. Commission members?
I move approval. Downing.
Second. Paul.
Motion second. Further discussion. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next is new townhouse development in a two-family district. This is permanent parcel number 00402002 at 1700 Lorain Avenue. And commission members, I'll just remind you, when we're looking at this, we're looking at for height, front yard setbacks, roof form, and frontage features. So if it's on a corner, you know, frontage could be on two sides of the building. So who's here for this?
I'm here, David. Wes Harper.
Hey, Wes. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. So as David mentioned, this is a two-unit townhome project in a two-family district. From my understanding, that's all we're reviewing here today. We're going through the HDRS process and this has been reviewed in compliance, or to be in compliance with the townhouse code itself. The parcel itself is kind of a unique shape, a flag shape in between some new housing that's been built over the last couple of years and Grove Court condominiums, which have, which were constructed in the eighties. So we're on the northern portion of Duck Island overlooking the city. So it's kind of a unique perspective overlooking the city. Next. Here is a drone image looking directly north. So you can see the two homes in the foreground here that are new construction. And then the area to the left where you see a handful of trees is where these two townhomes would be built. Next. Here is an image looking south from Scranton Peninsula. And so the area between the houses in the middle and the taller Grove Court condominiums to the right is where these two townhomes would be, kind of filling that gap. Next. And we'd be behind this structure, which is facing Lorain Avenue. Next. So here we have the site plan. Again, we've got the flag-shaped parcel. We have a driveway leading from Lorain Avenue back into the site, which leads to two townhomes, each of which have attached two-car garages. They're three stories with roof decks. There's quite a bit of topography on the northern portion of the parcel, which basically makes it unbuildable in many ways. The square footage of each is around 28 to 2900 square feet and they would each have a walkout basement. Next. Here's an image looking south from the Lake Link Trail. You can see that we have obviously two townhomes. We're looking to divine them, define them individually with a more darker hue to the eastern unit and a lighter color to the west. They would have obviously a good amount of glazing on that northern face and terraces and juliet balconies to take advantage of it. Next. Just a couple more views. You can see the house to the east and how it kind of plays off of the color palette there. But then switches to a lighter palette to the west to play with Grove Court. Next. Another view. Next. Here's a view, if you're walking up the driveway to the two units. Again, you can see the relationship from a color palette perspective to the existing context. Garage doors would be mostly glazed. And then we have the main entry of the western unit. You can see to the left, clearly defined and visible as you progress into the site. Next. And here's a more elevated view from, or looking south. Next. Here's a view of the southern facade. Next. And the color palette, material palette. Obviously a white metal siding, black metal siding, smooth concrete, black window frames, then the garage doors and site lighting. So the rest of the presentation does have the zoning submission and elevations, if you're looking to talk about the height. But again, it does fit the townhouse code. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So Wes, it looks like all three neighbors are gonna be using the same driveway, but the ownership is a little separated, if I read that site plan correctly. What kind of agreement would be there in place for maintenance and ingress and egress?
Yeah, it would just be the two new units that would have a driveway. The, let's say the house that's existing has its own driveway. There would be a shared access easement for each parcel. However, we, sometimes we don't split the parcel down the middle of the driveway. I don't know if we could go back to the site plan, Maurice? Show a little bit better. But there would be the typical, yeah, here we go. You can see the driveway, David, seven and a half feet for the western parcel and then seven and a half feet for the eastern parcel. So they both have skin in the game in regards to maintaining access on their individual properties. And it would be kind of your standard shared access and utility easement.
Okay, thank you. Commission members, questions?
No, this is Lilian. I move approval.
Second. Downing.
We have a motion second. Further discussion, please?
Just a quick point of discussion, Mr. Chair. My understanding, so not opposed by any means, but from that aerial, you can see that there's some trees that it looks like we're gonna have to lose as in order to accommodate this development. And there's not really a lot of opportunity for new growth trees in this area. My recollection of the city's tree ordinance is that it's applicable to four units or more or an acre or more. And I don't think that applies in either scenario here. But is it possible for us to get from, you know, through the director, from the administration, kind of a special presentation on how that tree ordinance is being implemented? I think that there's, when it comes to this project, kind of there's a spirit of that ordinance. And I want to make sure that that is front of mind as we're approving projects, especially in this part of town, where as we build up density and density is good, there's a trade-off often of trees. And I want us to make sure that we are meeting the letter and spirit of that ordinance, because it's important.
Great comment. Freddie, one, can you do a presentation on that? And then Wes, can you look at that tree ordinance and see if there's something that the developer is willing to do in that spirit? At the same time, because you're gonna be going through design review.
Yeah, and just, Mr. Chairman, if I may, more than willing to share that process and how that's working. Our forester in Public Works is in the process of examining development proposals as they come through the building department for that purpose. So I would be definitely willing to give that presentation and just discuss with you sort of what that, those process steps are like as we continue to move and mature into that, doing that regularly. So no problem.
Okay, great.
I would just like to, pardon me, Mr. Chair.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
I would just like to piggyback on Mr. Slade's comments. Some time ago, the council had a proposal and the administration had their position, and I don't know what's been resolved. So I think for clarity's sake, we need to understand what it is and who's enforcing it and how, and how that all works. So I just wanted to add those two words.
All right, great, thanks. And then Freddie, maybe you can get the forester over to the developer and maybe they can look at this together in the spirit of, so when they come back for design review, you know, that's, that's talked about.
No problem.
Thanks. I'll call the question. Michael, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks, Wes.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Lot consolidation, lot splits, permanent parcel number 00604078 and 079. This is at 7611 and 7615 Lawn Avenue. Who's here for this one, please?
Good morning. This is Katie Vuzi Gillette with City Architecture.
Mr. Chair, I must recuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you, August.
All right. Good morning. So we are here for the consolidation and split of 7611 and 7615 Lawn Avenue. These properties are part of a larger single-family development by CHN Housing Partners, which will introduce 30 new affordable, single-family homes to the Detroit Shorey neighborhood. This project is largely financed by the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. And CHN has successfully developed projects like this throughout various neighborhoods in Cleveland. Next slide, please. So the two lots in question are on Lawn Avenue, 7611 and 7615. Next slide, please. This is a photograph of the existing lots. As you'll see, they are currently vacant. Next slide. So the, most of the lots in the project are being developed on lots of record. However, these two parcels, we are requesting to replat. They're currently 35 feet wide each by 126 feet deep. Next slide, please. We are looking to replat them at 40 feet and 30 feet wide. Next slide, please. And the reason for that is of the 30 houses in this project, two of them will be single-story homes that are designed for residents with mobility challenges. So to accommodate the single-story home, we do require a 40-foot-wide lot. So you can see here how the two homes, on the left, a single-story, and on the right, a two-story home will fit next together. They are both, they both have garages that are accessed off of an alley. The lot on the left, this single-story has an attached garage and on the right, a detached garage off the alley. Next slide, please. And as I mentioned earlier, CHN has successfully developed these infill homes throughout several neighborhoods in the city of Cleveland. So this gives you a feel for what these homes will look like when they're constructed. On the left is a two-story home and that is, that photograph is from the Slavic Village neighborhood. On the right is the single-story home. That photograph is from the Clark Fulton neighborhood. And that's what we have today. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commission members?
Move approval. Downing.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Further discussion. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next is permanent parcel number 00417104. This is at 2499 Professor Street. Who's here for this one?
Brian Krantz.
Go ahead, Brian.
Hello. So this is a property that Ms. Lisa Farmer owns currently. And the goal at this point is to split it to align equal to the property next door and create its own parcel. And that's the front of the property. That's how the front of the house looks currently. If we go to the next slide, okay. So this is a view from the neighborhood. And we've identified where the 2499 professor is. Behind that is the vacant lot that we're hoping to split. Next. That's another view, probably a little bit better for you to be able to see. And another. And, okay, and this is what the surveyor prepared for us. So in the blue with the red writing is what the new lot would look like. And you can see the line is equal to the property directly, I guess that would be south of us. So that's the line that we're hoping to come across. And it'll be equal to... Was that clear enough for everybody? I hope.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Curry has her hand raised.
I'm just curious, is the, so that Thurmond, is that an alley on the other side or is that a street?
Do you know?
I think technically it's an alley, but it's used as a street. It has other houses that use that as a thoroughfare.
Okay.
But Thurmond is a listed road.
Okay, but there is, I guess there is access. So splitting the parcel doesn't create a flag parcel. There is access from both sides.
Yes.
Okay.
I have second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next matter, which is mandatory referrals. Hey, Lilian, can you take it from here for 10 minutes? I gotta greet somebody real quick.
Sure.
All right, thanks.
So mandatory referrals, authorizing the commissioner purchases and supplies to sell city-owned property no longer needed, located at Mount Carmel Road and Woodland Avenue to CMHA. Someone here to speak to this from the city?
Yeah, we have Rachel and Director Collier.
Madam Chair, I must recuse myself.
Okay. Do we still have a quorum?
Michael.
We have four.
Yes, we still have a quorum.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to check. Okay, and please go ahead.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Just a few points about this particular project. The plan for the housing for the Woodland Hills Estates was approved by the City Planning Commission. And this is a part of the Woodland Hill up next project. We just received the federal grant for $35 million to implement this project. The city is gonna put in an additional $15 million for infrastructure improvements. Also, just want to mention that the community green space and gardening activity around this site, many of you may have heard about the concerns around Bumper Farm. This was an initiative that was a part of a community garden effort for a number of years. This project will be impacting that in another location as being identified for that farm. The other thing I want to mention, just to be totally transparent with this project, is that it was always slated to, in the long term, be developed. Many of you know the efforts that we've put in with respect to vacant land reuse. For example, Lilian reimagining Cleveland, where we started to look at where we could have vacant lots be utilized for multiple purposes as interim uses. This is part of the reason why we put out licensing agreement for urban gardens. But ultimately, we want to see the city redevelop. So I wanted to mention that as a preface. So I wanted to mention that as a preface. I'm gonna turn it over now to my colleague to talk to you more about the project land transfer and what's being requested here. Thank you. Go ahead, please. James, or?
Okay. Yeah, and Rachel should be on as well.
I am.
Hi, I'm James Green with Department of Community Development. The department is looking to transfer, sell and transfer six parcels that are city of Cleveland owned parcels. In addition to those parcels, there are ten land bank parcels, which is where the farm is located that the director mentioned. So it's part of the larger project. The city is selling those parcels to CMHA for two hundred dollars each, which is consistent with what we do on land bank lots for affordable housing. So I'm gonna pass this over to Rachel Lowey, who will speak more about the project.
Thank you, Commissioner and Director. As Director Collier mentioned, this, the first two phases of the six phases of this project have been through design review and approved by the Planning Commission. It is part of the Buckeye Wood Hill Transformation Plan Implementation. On May twenty-sixth, CMHA and the city of Cleveland, along with our partners, were awarded a thirty-five million dollar Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant from HUD to implement our plan. And this, the land to be, we're requesting to be conveyed will make up the Phase Two, which is on Woodland, along, between Mount Carmel and Woodland, east of one hundred and tenth street. So we are very excited to be able to implement our plan. The project has some townhouses and a multi-family building. And the main piece to the Choice Neighborhood Program is mixed income. So there will be affordable housing units and a few market rate and tax credit units in this development.
Like, commission members' questions?
Move approval, Downing.
With a motion. On us, two seconds. We'll take, the councilmen's came first. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Actually, Madam Chair, I'll have to call the roll. This is how we do it now in the virtual meetings.
Yes.
So Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, let's go on to the next one.
Thank you.
I think, August, are you coming back? On?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and I think David's still not back. So another mandatory referral ordinance number seven, four seven one dash two zero two one, authorizing the Director of Public Works to enter into an amendment to the lease agreement with the United States Navy as an amendment to the lease agreement. I'm not gonna read the numbers, but that was done in two thousand and fourteen with the Cuyahoga County Port Authority to transfer a portion of the United States Navy leasehold to the Port Authority. This is so, so that it may be improved and maintained as part of the Cleveland Lakefront Nature Preserve. Who's here to speak for this one?
Good morning. Today we have John Fosbender from, from my office that will speak on this manner, matter.
Good morning. This is John Fosbender. I'm with the Division of Real Estate in the Mayor's Office of Capital Projects. And as was noted, there's going to be just a minor modification of the leasehold areas for, for the two leases mentioned with the Navy and the Port Authority leases. Next slide, please. Essentially, what's happening is the small portion, it's about twenty-two eight oh eight acres, that is currently part of the Navy's lease and is adjacent to the Port Authority's lease for the nature preserve. Falls outside the Navy's security fence, and so the Navy doesn't, is willing to let it be part of the nature preserve and then the Port Authority will, will be able to maintain and develop it as, as it needs to as part of its, its nature reserve operations. Next slide, please. Here's a, we're trying to show you on, on a, on a map. You can see in the blue outline is what the Navy currently leases from the city adjacent to the property that it owns. The yellow and polka dotted area is what the port leases from the city as a, for part of its nature preserve. And you see in red, that's generally the area that we're going to be transferring from the Navy lease to the port's lease. And again, that falls outside of the Navy's perimeter fence. And so it, all the parties have agreed and, and we've gotten approval from both the Navy and the, the Port Authority to proceed with these lease amendments.
Okay. Questions from the commission members?
And move approval.
Second, Flucker.
We have a motion right second. Can you call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Okay. The question, as I read this, Freddie, it says we approved this on May twenty-first. It's an unnumbered ordinance. So are we seeing this again?
No, this is on here, and Michael can explain this for a matter of tracking purposes because there was not a number on this. And the objective was to ensure that this was listed on the agenda. This was approved. This is the rezoning for the freezer facility that Orlando is putting in as part of the opportunity corridor.
So do we need to do anything with it or just move on?
No, just for informational purposes. And Michael, if you want to add anything to that, that's fine.
Thank you, Director. Madam Chair, this is just to create a paper trail for the particular ordinance number that's involved. It's just a, kind of a bookkeeping kind of thing and really doesn't have any other purpose.
Okay, let's go on to the next item. Design review cases. We're starting in the southeast. We'll need anyone who is speaking to this matter to be sworn in. So do we have David and Scott here or Isaac?
Yes, Isaac Robinson.
Okay, are you the only one speaking? Anyone else?
There will be three of us, David Wilson and Scott Whitley as well.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Okay. Well, go ahead. I should say, this is the Garden of Eleven Angels New Memorial Garden. They are seeking final approval. This is at Imperial Avenue and East one hundred and twenty-third Street.
Thank you very much. Can we pull up the first slide, please? You can go to the next slide with the first visual. Thank you. It is with a great deal of humility that the Garden of Eleven Angels team comes before the Planning Commission today to present the Garden of Eleven Angels project. I'm sure all of you on this call understand the history of this site, so we won't dwell on those details today. We intend for the Garden of Eleven Angels to become a sacred space of healing. It will restore a sense of pride for this community and that out of the rubble of one of the most horrific things imaginable will rise something authentic, natural and beautiful that honors the past while promoting a healthier and safer future. The Western Reserve Land Conservancy currently owns all eight parcels and we're going through the lot consolidation process. We acquired four from the city of Cleveland Land Bank, three from, out of receivership from Buckeye Shaker Development Corporation and one from the Cuyahoga Land Bank. Moving forward, the Land Conservancy will continue to own these eight parcels and we are in a long-term lease and management agreement with Burton Belkhar Development. First and foremost, this space is intended to honor the eleven women who lost their lives as well as their surviving family members. This project benefits from a robust group of resilient partners, most notably the families of the victims, the neighbors, the Mount Pleasant Ministerial Alliance, Land Studio, Buckeye Area Development Corporation, Mount Pleasant Now, Cleveland City Council, County Council, now the City of Cleveland Planning Commission, as well as our project team, Scott Whitley, Keisha Chambers and others that will be joining us, including Dominic Ozan. While these heinous acts took place between the four walls of a residential structure, the impact permeated throughout the entire community. The impact of this restoration is similar. It isn't sufficient to simply place a memorial garden on a single site. We want the natural benefits and improvements being made from planting native trees and grasses to spread out to all the parcels as well as beyond the parcel lines with healthy and healing spillover effects. This will demonstrate a sense of caring, both for the people and for the place. This brutal act is a stark example of our collective failure as a society and a community. The mere fact that it has taken eleven years to plan, design and fund this project drives home the point that the same institution that failed these eleven women continue to fail in the lack of remembrance. What we have before us is a unique opportunity, not to right the wrongs, but to do something positive that we can all be proud of. While this is a tragedy that captured the attention of an entire country, violence against women is not unique to this site. There are very few things in life that are simply black or white, especially in our city. However, making this project a reality is one of them. So without further ado, I'll hand over the speaking to Scott and David.
Good morning. You can go back to, well, no, that's fine. You can start right at that slide. Good morning. My name's Scott Whitley with Whitley and Whitley Architects. We were chosen to be the architect of record to bring this project into reality. As some of you may know, this project has been going on for a number of years. And we have picked up the ball. We, we got on board a few months ago to take it from concept to reality. So how we're gonna do this presentation is I will lead the presentation for the architectural part. And we also have David Wilson, who will lead in the landscaping part. And Dave and I will kind of go freewheeling back and forth. David has been on the project a, a long time. So I'm asking that he jump in if there's any points he can embellish, if there's a point that's missed, et cetera, et cetera. Just chime in as necessary. Okay, so, starting with the presentation, the location map. This site is located between a hundred and, east one hundred and twenty-first street and east one hundred and twenty-third street on Imperial Avenue in Cleveland. You may go to the next slide. And what we'll do is go through the existing conditions, try and give you a sense of what the site looks like in its current conditions. Next slide. Okay. The picture to the right is an overall view of the consolidated eight parcels. As you can see from this picture, we are in a residential neighborhood. We have the old, I think it's the old Ray sausage plant directly due east of the site. And then surrounding the rest of the site are all residential houses. To the, the picture to the left is a picture of the existing survey. And what you can see from this particular slide is that the slide, the site is relatively flat. There is a gentle slope starting from the south of the site, raising up toward the north of the site. But it's a very gentle site. I think once we get to the pictures, you can see just how subtle the, the slope is. Next slide. Okay, this slide shows the existing slide, the, the existing site. The existing site is made up of eight parcels that have been consolidated into one parcel. We do want you to see the three parcels on the east end of the site. The furthest parcel on the site, on the east end of the site is the parcel where many or all of the atrocities took place. That particular site, we really make, are making a point not to build anything on that site. We will only place landscaping or something, some type of element that gives life. But we will do no, no, no building or no structure on that site. The two sites adjacent to that will be the site where the Memorial Plaza will be centered on those two sites. And then the eight sites, I mean, the, the five additional sites to the west will be where we provide open green space and hopefully a park-like setting. Next slide. Okay, I'll, I'll go over this quickly. This, these are pictures of the existing conditions of the site. If you look at the picture to the upper right, that's an overview kind of showing you the, the site between the old Ray sausage and the residential house to the west. And you can, you can see the, the green space and what the site looks like in the existing conditions. I won't go over each one of these sites, but you may wanna just take notice as you look through each of the pictures just how the, the site slopes. It slopes gently, as I said, from north to south. We do have some existing trees on the site, some of which will remain, some will be transplanted in other areas of the site. Next slide. Okay, now we'll go into the proposed design of what we were trying to achieve. Next slide. The first, oh, go back a few slides, please. Next slide. Next. Forward. I think two more after this. We are missing. Okay, could you keep going till we get to the slide? I need, maybe it's out of order. Okay, let's go back. Let's go back to, why don't we stay right there? Okay. From a design standpoint, I had a slide of, of the original concept. So from a design standpoint, one of the first things we wanted to do was honor the original concept. And the original concept was developed by an architect named Kevin Robinette. From that point, maybe a year ago, correct me if I'm wrong, David. I believe David did a, he built up on the original concept. And then we were chosen to take that concept to bring it into reality. So the slide you're looking at now is the design as we are proposing it today. Like I said, what we wanted to do was honor the original concept. And the original concept started with this concept of the infinity symbol. So we have taken this infinity symbol as a symbol to represent endurance, something that can stand the test of time, something that will stay here forever and be remembered forever. That was the original goal and that's what we started with. The next thing we wanted to achieve was we, since we are in a residential neighborhood, we wanted to pick materials that were appropriate to its surrounding environment. The second thing we, I mean, third thing, next thing we wanted to do was we wanted to create a place where people can connect. People can pray, people can reflect. The next thing we wanted to do was we, we wanted to erase the pain of the past. We wanted to bring something to the community, to the victims' family that brings joy and will bring pride back to the, to this area of the community. We needed to give the community much-needed green space. If you're looking at this slide, one of the things you may notice is, and, and we'll probably talk about a little bit further, is we use the theme of eleven. We use the theme of eleven to represent the souls that were lost throughout this tragedy. We use the theme of 11 to represent the souls that were lost throughout this tragedy. We've used the theme of 11 in the trees that are surrounding the Plaza Memorial area. We've used the, the theme of 11 in the number of pavers we've chosen to connect the front entry of the Memorial to the Memorial Plaza. We use the, the theme of 11 in some of the plantings that are planted on the Memorial, as well as some of the, the trees that are grouped in, on the site. And then, lastly, we wanted to, to use materials that were light and that we felt brought lightness and that it would represent lightness over the darkness. You may go to the-
Scott, I'm gonna add a point of clarification. On Memorial itself, we, we are only showing renderings of what that, what that looks like. We are going to be going before this, this committee for approval for the Memorial. Right now, the design is being, is being vetted by, by the families to make sure that, that the names are correct and that also some of the other elements that are being represented on the, on the monument, which is, which is being produced by Milano Monuments. It, it, is, is something that both the families and the community first approve before we, we show it publicly to, to this committee.
Okay. And, let's see, was this the next slide?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's go back, and this slide is a slide where David can take over.
Thank you, Scott. As, as Scott mentioned, really, the, the idea of, of, of this design is to bring, is to bring not only life, but color and vibrancy to the site. And, and the plantings were chosen specifically to, to provide visual interest throughout all seasons. Yeah, not, not only spring and summer, but, but also fall and winter as well. And so as Scott mentioned, also, we use multiples of 11. So we, we have 11 trees that are embracing the, the monument, the Memorial Plaza to the, to, to the back of the site, as well as 11 trees that are being planted on, on the actual, the, the easternmost parcel itself. There are existing trees that were planted about three or four years ago by the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, some of which have since been either, either because of just the, the, the shape that they're in or, or damage that they've sustained have to be removed. But some of those trees are in good condition, and we, we intend to transplant throughout the site. Next slide. And so this is just a sampling of the, of the landscaping that will be, that will be used not only in the, the Memorial Plaza itself, but throughout the site to create that park-like setting. Next slide. And so these are the varieties of, of trees and landscaping that will be used. As I mentioned, you know, bringing that color and the vibrancy to the site throughout the seasons. Also, the plants were chosen really, really for their, their, their native qualities, native to Ohio, because we wanted to be true to, to the native palette, plant palette as much as we could. Next slide. This is just a sampling of, of some of the additional landscape to give you a sense of that visual, the, the texture and the color that, that we're hoping to bring to the site. Next slide. Scott?
Okay, and one other point I, I will add regarding the landscaping is that we will be providing areas for the community. There will be landscaping that is put in at the time of construction. And there, there will also be two areas within that infinity shape. If you're looking at the, this material slide, if you see the, the two brown areas within the infinity shape, those will be community gardens where the community can participate and interact with the site and maintain their own garden. Okay, now going to material selections. As I said, one of the goals was to pick materials that we felt represented the importance of, of, of this memorial, but also fit in context with the surrounding neighborhood. We'll, we'll start with the, the shadow box fence. There's an existing shadow box fence that we will pick up and take that shadow box fence around the rest of the, the perimeter of the site. When it comes to the, the plaza itself, we've picked a readily available Unilock paver. And the concept behind this was to go with the Hollenstone Rustic Red Paver as the main paver. And those would be the pavers that would be split up into 11 segments to represent the souls of the victims. And then we would border that paver with the Hollenstone River, which is a lighter beige-yellowish color. And that would be the border that would surround the entire paving pattern. As for the wall, we're going with the state wall from Unilock. And then we would be going with the Universal Coping. We looked at a, a number of different color strategies. The monument itself is, is a dark monument, and we played around with some schemes going off of that kind of gray-black motif. And we felt that was just too dark, and, and we came to the conclusion we needed something that represented lightness. And so these were the, the color selections we chose and the reasons why we chose them. We will also be, if you look at the bottom left-hand corner, we'll be engraving Garden of Eleven Angels in the Universal Coping of the wall that, the, the sitting wall and at the front of the plaza. And then we also have a couple of donor pieces that will be added to the site, which will be the bike rack and a, an open library. Next slide. And then we'll, we'll just take a quick look at a few renderings to try to give you a feel of what this Memorial Plaza will look like. As you see, we are looking probably across the street, across Imperial Avenue, looking in at the front entry of the plaza. And as you see, this is where we would like for people to be able to gather. This would be a, a place where it's more people connecting, open and, and how people connect, talk, and, you know, communicate with one another, gather. From that entry plaza, we have a walkway that takes you back to the Memorial Plaza. And if you can even see from this rendering, we, we hope to, to bring you in at the entry point. But you can see a hint of the Memorial beyond, and we're hoping that draws people to walk back to the Memorial.
And Scott, I, I will, I will add, just in terms of the grading of the site, that at, where the, where the entryway plaza meets the sidewalk, the, the, the slope will go up three feet, which is very, to, to the back of the plaza, which is about, I believe, 85 feet to the back. So it's a very gradual slope that is ADA accessible. We were hoping that this will be accessible to as wide of an audience as possible. So that entryway wall will, will be up about four feet, and that will go along with the grade continuously to about two feet to the back, where that will provide a, a sitting wall and, and a place where, where, where people that visit the site can sit and experience the memorial.
Uh, next slide. And this is a, a slide of the memorial area, a kind of a bird's eye view of the memorial area. But this is the, is, is the area that I think we envision as being the, the place where people may be more quiet as opposed to the entry plaza where people will sit and reflect, will. This will be the quiet area and the solemn area of the Memorial Plaza. Next slide. Okay, lighting. From a lighting standpoint, the, the goal of, of lighting was simply to provide lighting throughout the, the pathway so that it, the pathway is clearly visible in the evening for safety. What we have chosen to do was, is to go with these ground, in-ground solar brick lights. So they will be placed on either side of, of the pathway, and they are the lights represented in blue. They are solar-powered. They should be relatively maintenance-free. Then, once we get to the Memorial Plaza itself, we'll have four in-ground kind of angled uplights that will light up the memorial. And then surrounding the, the 11 trees that are surrounding the back of, of the Memorial Plaza, kind of enclosing the Memorial Plaza, we'll have in-ground uplights that will light those trees up. Next slide. So this is a picture of, of what we hope we will get from this type of lighting layout. And it's kind of a lighting layout that kind of glows, and then kind of the light would dissipate into the evening. Hopefully, this lighting pattern will, will lead you to the back of the memorial where you can sit and reflect even in the evening time. Next slide. And then finally, this is a, a rendering of, of what the Memorial Plaza would look like in the evening, once you got to that sacred space. Next, next slide. And from there, we will entertain any questions you may have.
This is really lovely. Who's going to be maintaining it?
We have fundraised for a maintenance endowment, and Burton Bell Car will be doing the maintenance long-term with their landscaping crew.
Great, thank you.
Mission members, any other questions or comments?
I just really appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into this project. It's very emotional, and I, I'm sure it will really bring a lot that, that we don't even imagine to that community and to the, to the cause. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move a approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Michael, can you take the roll?
Sure. Is David back?
I am back.
Okay, so I'll call your name. Bowen?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Lucker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Slides?
Yes.
So motion carries. Just want to thank the team that presented and all that are working on the project. I think the collaboration and really the sensitivity and thoughtfulness is, is extraordinary. So just want to say we appreciate all that you're doing.
I'd like to add, it's a beautiful project. And I was, I was fortunate enough to get back at the beginning of it, so I'm happy that I was, because it's a beautiful, well-thought-out project. Thank you.
And David, I'll go back to you.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that for me, Lillian. Northeast Design Review, A Piece of Cleveland, New Construction, Final Approval. This is at 19001 Nottingham Road. Who's here for this?
Matt Plasnick from Cleveland Draw Architecture. Could you hear me?
I can hear you.
Great.
Go ahead, man. Oh, before you get going, I gotta swear you in. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Go ahead. Thank you.
So this is a project, it's a new showroom slash storage facility for a, for a company called A Piece of Cleveland, or APAC. And essentially, what APAC does is they, they salvage wood and, for, to repurpose old wood, whether that be trees that they cut down or, or salvaged wood from various locations around town, around Cleveland. One, so, so this is sort of a, an area of design center slash showroom where a lot of these salvaged wood pieces will be stored, and people could kind of come, you could buy this wood for anything from furniture to cladding, so on and so forth. And they also have their own designers and craftsmen that they, that can work with people. So you kind of come, choose your wood, pick your wood, and pick your design and kind of, you know, work with it. So this is the first slide. This is a rendering. This is a front view of the building, looking from Nottingham Road. Essentially, it's just a, it's a, we're looking to use a prefabricated, pre-engineered building, but we're gonna try to dress up the front a bit. The overhang will, will extend forward around the building and on the, the sides and on the top. And then we have sort of a portal vestibule area with a canopy awning with the signage of A Piece of Cleveland over. So it's, the materials we're looking at here are really metal panel and a salvaged wood plank, flanking each side of the, the front entry. You could go to the next slide. These next few slides, I believe, are just some context photos. If you look at the top right, there's two plots we have, which currently, I believe, the plot consolidation is pretty much complete. We're at the final stage. Nottingham Road is, is, you could see Nottingham Road, and the, the back of the property backs up to Euclid Creek Park. Next slide. This is another aerial view, looking from the, from the east. You could see that there is an existing building. That building, I believe, has been demolished by now. But, and there's two drives off of Nottingham that we'd like to maintain. Next slide, please. This is another aerial view, looking from the west. That, again, that building, I believe, has been demolished, is no longer there. And then two existing drives that we'd like to maintain. The parking area that you see there is, will, is basically gonna remain. It'll be resurfaced. But, yeah, next slide. This is another street view to give you some context. Again, that building is, is no longer there. There's a, a wood fence, existing wood fence that goes along the site. The two sides, that fence will remain, but we'll kind of fix it up and paint the fence. In the front, per discussion with the recent design review, we will replace that fence in the front. Next slide. This is a front view of, of the, the property. One thing to note here, there's an existing monument sign that, that is in the front. The base of that existing monument sign, we would like to maintain as well. Next slide. And here's another view, that, that building again is no longer there, and that, that fence will be replaced with a aluminum picket decorative fence. Next slide. This is an existing site plan. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see it kind of overlay. Here's our proposed new site plan. Our, our new, the new building, again, prefab, pre-engineered building will essentially sit on the, the spot as the old building. And we'll, for the most part, maintain the existing parking area and drives. But again, we'll resurface those, that existing asphalt. Yeah, next slide. This is a landscape plan. The, the landscape in the front is, is fairly simple. Essentially, we're incorporating some natural grasses and a boxwood, small shrubbery. But there's some comments from the local, the, the most recent design review. We, we show some hydrangea bushes, but we will probably, per the designer review comment, will eliminate those bushes. Next slide. This is our floor plan. This is our floor plan. Floor plan is essentially it's open interior. There's a small office in the front and a small bathroom and a mechanical area in the back. Besides that, it's it's essentially a open floor plan, big enough for small tow motor to go around, carry wood in, carry wood out. Like a big kind of storage slash shop slash design center. Next slide. This is our current proposed elevation. The top elevation is the side adjacent to the parking lot. And the bottom elevation is the street elevation. Again, we have pretty much the simple palette of materials. Two types of ribbed metal panel, a grayish metal in the front, and then the sides will all be like a beige, I think it's called light stone, ribbed metal panel. And then the front, we have salvaged wood flanking each side of a small glass vestibule and a canopy awning with a piece of Cleveland signage. And then we were gonna incorporate some lilac bushes on the the each side of that to kind of frame the two windows that you see there. It's a symmetrical elevation. Next slide. This, I don't know. Yeah, that's fine. You we could go to the next. This is an old slide we incorporated in the design review presentation so they could see the difference from our initial presentation to the more current one. This is a conceptual section of the building. Again, it's a it's a it's a prefab, pre-engineered building. It's called a K building, which I I wasn't too familiar with up until recently, but what it's essentially, it's a metal steel frame with wood girts, two-by-eight wood girts and pearlins on the top and inside.
What's the clear height from that?
Sorry?
Clear height of the building?
Oh, clear height.
I couldn't read the number.
I believe it's fourteen feet to the 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 fascia, the gutter, and then to the top. Gosh, if you give me a second, I could check it really quick on my CAD file. It may be eighteen?
Okay, is it sprinkled?
It will not be sprinkled.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sure, you could go to the next slide. This demonstrates just a couple of images of the the materials we're using. It's it's a ribbed metal panel with exposed cantners, light or sort of a cooler gray in the front and then on the sides and the roof will all be that light stone. And with exception of we have some wood cladding, that that salvaged wood cladding that we're gonna use in the front. This slide, you could go to the next one. This the this is our monument sign. The base is existing and this is what we would like to incorporate for the for the signage. This it kind of illustrates sort of what the company does. A big part of the company is it's called Nature's Beauty. They they cut down trees. They're sort of landscapers. But they also they cut down trees with the purpose of saving the wood into live-edge wood slabs for various, you know, mainly for furniture and tables and so on and so forth. But we would like to incorporate a live-edge wood slab with a simple pin-mounted letters, a piece of Cleveland. The the signage, this is I suppose we're not looking, this isn't final review for for signage, I I suppose. This guy, we don't have a signed contractor on board at this point, so we're it's this is a concept for the signage. But it's likely gonna, this is probably the direction we're gonna go. And next slide. And that's it.
Commission members?
This is Lillian. Wonderful project. In full disclosure, the early days of Piece of Cleveland did my counter in my house with all the wood from school on East Fifty-Fifth. It was amazing. So thank you for that. Ten years ago, maybe eleven years ago.
Yeah, oh, good.
So I move approval, but I believe you do not need to come back. You can go to staff for the signage and other details. You don't need to come back to the commission if my commission members agree.
Second, Luca.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. Further discussion? Great use for the property. Thank you so much. I'll call the question. Michael, call the role, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Yep.
Paul.
Yes.
Slides.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Have a great weekend.
Thanks, you too.
Cam's Medical Building Renovation in Edition Seeking Final Approval. This is at one seven seven three zero Lorraine Avenue. Who's here for this?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I have your copy of the agenda is incorrect. They're seeking conceptual approval and my apologies for that.
Okay. Conceptual approval. Is that that went out to all the members then too, but it's corrected on the video here?
It's correct on the video and it's correct on the draft agenda, but that went out earlier, but on your final agenda that I sent out yesterday, I had that wrong.
Okay, so this is for conceptual commission members. Who's here to speak to this, please?
Hi, Gary Fisher, architect with Fisher and Associates.
Okay, Gary, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Go ahead, please.
All right, so on your screen, you'll see the aerial site plan of the existing building. It's the one with the blotchy roof and the little blue symbol. It's a really a it's a mid-century modern building, was used as medical offices, very low-ceilinged interior, sits on Lorraine Avenue across from Fairview Hospital. The dental office is to the right on the visual that is also owned by the same owners and they share that entire parking lot behind there. The plan originally started as renovating the building and adding a second floor for three owner suites. It increased in scope to add a large suite for the owner, two smaller apartments, and then the third floor of the building becomes an enclosed pool for the owners themselves. You can go to the next slide. This is a view of the existing building. Next slide. That's the rear of the building looking towards the north east. Next slide. That's the front of the building that faces Lorraine Avenue. Next slide. So the concept of the building is obviously a much larger structure. It will follow the same footprint as the original building, maintaining some of the same foundations. We'll be adding the second floor and obviously the third floor to the building. The first floor will be faced in a synthetic stone panel, a stacked stone. The second floor is a smooth synthetic stone panel and the top floor is also a smooth synthetic, excuse me, synthetic stone panel. That will follow around to the side elevation on the west, in which case you see the owner's garage and a space up above that that is getting added on to an existing space. Go to the next slide. And then we have the rear of the building, which would face the parking lot on the top of the slide, and then down at the lower end is the view from the east side coming down Lorraine Road. You can probably go to next slide as well. Little harder to see, but down in the lower right-hand corner is the site plan and generally you can see the shape of the building following the original plan. If you want to drop back to, well, go to the for the next slide. On the first floor on the left will be a small deli, a Lebanese deli by the owners. Then we've laid out a typical doctor's office space that our medical office space that would go in the rest of the building. So there are one, two, three, four spots for that. The owner's garage is up near the top right of the building. The there's a small patio proposed outside of the deli. And we're maintaining some more glass. We're actually adding more glass and entrances along the Lorraine roadside. It was pretty closed off in general. The offices are pretty dingy and again, very low ceiling. The ceilings were at the top of the windows. So we're actually increasing the height of the building. We have been through local design review board. They have some a few comments, which we're happy to comply with, as well as we have a couple of variances that are being requested primarily for height of the building. And we're working with zoning on those. No real you know, big issues, adding some overhangs on the Lorraine roadside. If you want to go back, let's say, three or four slides. There you go. Oh, want to go to the one more forward. So on the Lorraine roadside, they have asked us to do little overhangs over each of the doors. We'll obviously come back with signage and some landscaping as well. But again, no, no real complaints from local design review. I'm happy to answer some questions.
Thank you, Gary. Commission members?
I move approval. No, this is conceptual approval.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion and second. Further discussion? Michael, call the role, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Yeah.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Have a great weekend.
Thank you.
The next on the agenda is Madam CJ Walker, Business District New Construction. Who's here for this?
Ibrahim Haki.
Okay, could you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Go ahead.
All right, so we are proposing to do a retail and office development at the corner of Crawford and Huff on this cover image. We can see that we're looking down Crawford on the left side and down towards Huff on the right side. So we're kind of facing down towards the southwest a little bit. Our primary goal with this building is to bring in a residential feel into a district that although Huff is a major thoroughfare, there's obviously a lot of residential-style buildings along the area. We do feel this is a very important building to bring into this area to help development activity to prosper. If you can move to the next slide, please. Existing conditions right now, it is currently a big open site. It is being transferred from land bank. I'm not quite sure what the status of that is. In the background of the picture in the lower left-hand side, you can see the Huff Medical Center. And it has some parking lots that come up to our site and the parking lots are screened with some fencing that you can see in the middle photograph. Our intention is to carry up the spirit of that particular fence to close off our parking. I'm alluding to something you're gonna see in just a minute. Let's go ahead and move on to the next image. This is just a layout of where the site our site is. This is the only image that has north facing up on the page. Every other image that we're gonna look at, we're looking at the front of the building towards the bottom of the page. And let's move on. So here's our site plan. We are pushing the building towards the street and towards the corner at Crawford to give it a very strong street definition, taking the parking, wrapping it into the side, into the back. With having a residential area to the back, we're pretty concerned about that, so we're doing our best to put in a high-quality screen fence, which you'll see on the next slide. We're putting in a retaining wall because we have the opportunity to do that with the topography, which again, just adds to keeping things separated between ourselves and the residential. You can see right on that. That's fine. This is good. There's a sample of that. The screen wall, it's an aluminum material called knot wood. Great play on words. And there's the retaining wall on the left and this image has sampling of the the landscaping that we would love to see on this site. Let's move on. We are using lighting that has the full cutoff at the backside along the property lines. Again, we do not want to impede on our neighbors. But on the street, you can see that we have a little bit more extra lighting because that's pretty much what you need in a resident in a retail area. Something that's very interesting on this particular image, you can see on the right-hand side of the building, light type L4. It's much brighter than the rest of the site. We're proposing a mural to be located at this to give a historic lesson or homage to the namesake of the building, Madam CJ Walker. And let's move on to the next slide. So this next series of slides, you're gonna just see how the building looks in the neighborhood. Again, we're pretty concerned about the context and the massing of the building while we still do want it to stand out as any retail owner would want to see. So this building, we're seeing the the one tenant that we have, the LOI four, which is a financial institution. And let's go ahead and just progress through the slides and take a look around the building. And you can see how we are pulling up the to match up with what's adjacent. Let's keep moving. The one empty lot that is directly to the the left of the image right there, that is owned by a church property. It is not being developed at this point, but we do want to maintain that separation, the privacy with the fencing. And let's go ahead and keep moving around the building. Again, you can see in context as it fits in the neighborhood. And we can move on. And here, this is how we are addressing Huff, the major thoroughfare that we really are depending on for the life blood of this particular project. And let's move on. This again is the financial institution. Yeah, there is a bus stop existing that's right on the street at Huff, so we've extended the sidewalk at this particular location to go out to give a nice place for for patrons of the bus system to wait for the bus. Let's move on. And here we start to face where the the retail areas are. And here I'm gonna stop and pause and say that we intend to give some leeway to the tenants as they move in. We expect that there will probably be some on- awnings or canopies that get developed. The signage is just a placeholder. After talking with design review yesterday, although not required, we are going to include in the lease exhibits that the tenants are required to go to design review before they go in for building permits. That way, we can make sure that we are really getting a nice design on Huff and that all the great ideas that came from our design review are are being carried into the rest of the project. And let's move on. Again, a view of the retail. And let's move on. And this is a shot that shows how the retail is going to be addressing the street. We do want to extend the sidewalk all the way out to the curb line at the retail area and just give that big, open feeling of a nice place to be. And let's move on where we're gonna see a hint of that mural I mentioned as you look down towards the retail area. And again, let's move on. So here is that mural. This, I have to note, is a placeholder for the mural. We are in contact with Famikos who is going to to work with us to get a mural artist, a specialist, to develop an actual true, unique mural. The imagery that you see here is honestly, it's just pulled from the internet and we believe that this building and this particular entrepreneur needs to have a lot more than just internet pictures. So once we get to that area, we're gonna have the mural come back in as an artwork. It's gonna go through the artwork review. It'll go through a complete design review. And let's move on to the next slide where we start to get to the back of the building. Oh, sorry, we came down the street. Just so you can see it in context again. Actually, one note here is that you could see that the the metal fencing from the Huff Medical Center is carrying across and framing out the entrance to our drive. Let's move on to the next. Let's move on to the next. So the back of the building, this is something that design review really assisted gratefully with with us. Uh we initially had a a lower level siding back here. They suggested that the higher areas should be brick all the way up. After looking at it, we completely agree with it. And again, it goes to being a good neighbor. Um so the center area is brick. We will probably be adding a little bit more separation as recommended by design review in the planes of the brick in the siding. The siding itself is a fiber cement siding prefinished. And let's move on to the next picture. You can see this back of the building from the other direction. And then the next picture shows it from the previous street, the the street directed to the south. And this is where we do feel that designer can give some great direction. And let's move on to the next picture, which I believe are plans. So again, the space on the left-hand side is office space. The other places are in night retail. They will be developed for the retail tenants as the space is needed, which is pretty typical for retail. Let's move on to the next, which is sections. So we are providing some nice high ceilings, which is again typical for retail. And let's move on to the next. Where you can see just the technical aspects, which yeah, let's move on to the next one. Let's get to the elevations. So here he you can see each of the elevations in context. We have a lot of emphasis on bricks specifically. We love this manganese iron spot and the unique thing about this one is depending on how it's being seen and the lighting, it will literally change colors. So it'll be anything from a light gray to a a very dark brick. And go on to the next slide. We'll make the material even some more where we can see that we do have the stone base, which we feel will accent the building quite nicely. You can see that we have the siding, the prefinished siding, the storefront materials are currently shown as white with some blue glazing. Again, design review suggested that we might want to revisit that. And if we do, we will go back to design review to to get more clarification and and collaboration. And with that, that's the end of this particular presentation and we request not just for schematic approval, but for final approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Elaine, go ahead.
I just wanna say um this is just um extraordinary. I just wanna commend you. I mean, it's been a while since I've been so pleasantly surprised by commercial project like this. There's so much to love about this project from the scale, the roofs, the way it turns the corner, the mural. I I mean, I really mean this. It's absolutely wonderful. And so thank you. And it kind of brings back uh kind of a better vision for what neighborhood retail can be uh in a way with texture and focused on the pedestrian, but also has a way for people to come by car. It is just really wonderful. So um it's not very often. I'm so surprised by something and and this is just so I commend you all. Um the only um suggestions, just a suggestion would be uh and Famikos knows this well too, is there is a youth council in Huff um that Daniel Gray Conter from twelve is working, leading with, which is a literary arts program. That youth council, about twelve youth have two committees. One is working on public art and one is working on zoning. Um and it's not that they do the projects, but they would probably just love to engage with you on the the process around the mural. So it's just a suggestion and Famikos knows that the youth council. So uh I think it would be an amazing project for them to be part of. They're working on a couple other mural projects now.
Thank you very much. We'll take that back to Kristen. See if she can give us a introduction. Thank you.
She's involved. She can.
Cool. Thank you.
It's hard to hear you speak.
Oh, my apologies. I'm going to introduce introduce the developer, Mr. Kareem Abdul Salam. Kareem, we can't really hear you too well, but I do believe before you speak, we need to swear you in.
I can't hear him. Maurice, is there something you can do on your side to help him or?
No, I I it sounds like a bad connection. There's nothing I could do for that.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Beautiful. Um can I just swear you in real quick?
Sure, sure.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh so let me first thank you, Chairman, and the members of the planning committee uh for reviewing this and and going through it and asking the questions. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the genesis of this uh project in the Huff District. Being a developer from outside of Cleveland, it was really a a a welcome uh introduction into the city. But I would be remiss. The reason I say I would be remiss because Madam CJ Walker, in the spirit of Juneteenth that we're celebrating tomorrow, uh she was one of the first African-American millionaires in the history of this country. And the second year of her birth was the second year of Juneteenth. But more importantly, she was an integral part of making sure that those communities that were disenfranchised post-reconstruction had a way to develop economic development in those communities that were often fraught with uh isolation from uh the larger community because of the color of their skin. And so she utilized what we do best, the things that we use every on an everyday basis and really began to have the first franchise of black or white was one of the first franchisers in this country to take what she uh developed and really made other wealthy individuals uh to sell those products, which were basically hair care products. Fast forwarding and the reason that we know a a lot about her because she ended up buying one of the largest mansions in the county that I'm from, Westchester County, New York, right next to John D Rockefeller and was hobnobbing with them to still talk about parity for African-Americans in this country. And so a hundred years later, you know, and and two hundred years since that time, we're still talking about those same issues. So one of the things for us in the Huff District is to really impart to people that there is a benefit as the lady said before me, on neighborhood retail. And the big box is great, but people live in their neighborhoods and we want to make sure that we give budding entrepreneurs who live in the community and develop a sense of place so that they can have the great opportunity to do what needs to be done for their families. So I I really thank you for giving me the opportunity to say something. This is a thing that we really uh like and we've done many of these projects around the country, but I am very uh happy about this one because it particularly touches the essence of development and community development for people who have totally been locked out of that. Thank you very much.
Well, I gotta tell you, I'm very pleased that you're doing this development. You're actually uh bringing forth her legacy in a beautiful way and I appreciate it. Commission members?
I move approval. Downing.
Second, Flucker.
We have a motion, second, further discussion.
One question. Is this for final approval?
This is for final approval.
This is for final approval. This is Kim Scott, the neighborhood planner, and I just want to uh speak up and uh note that um this has been through a a very long uh process. And yes, this is for final approval.
Thank you.
I think that the the signage should also come back to staff if whoever made the motion is okay with it. I don't think it needs to come back here for the signage.
That's fine.
Yeah, Lily, if I may suggest, should this not be approved with accommodations, given the testimony provided by yourself and other commission members?
I agree.
Me too. Let's overrule the the whoever made the motion. I'm just kidding. I I really, I uh it's extraordinary.
Uh Diane, you wanna amend your motion?
Sure.
So this is approved, final approval with accommodations.
And signage going to staff.
And sign is going to staff. Um will the seconder second it again?
I think that was Charles, but.
Well, I wasn't sure if it was August. I will second it.
Oh, August. Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion, second, with accommodations. Uh Michael, call the role, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul. Slide.
Yes.
Thank you for this uh beautiful presentation on the eve of Juneteenth. Um wonderful.
Thank you for coming to Cleveland. We're lucky to have you. So welcome. There's more to develop here.
Workplaces to do beautiful work. All right, we're gonna move on to the next agenda mo- agenda item. Catalina House, new construction, seeking conceptual approval. This is at two zero five five East Seventy-Ninth Street. Who's here for this one?
Greg Rance with AODK.
And Mark Kalina.
Okay, if you both can raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer it under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Go ahead, please.
Mark, you wanna give a brief introduction of the project?
Uh yes, I would like to. Thanks, Greg. Uh hi, everyone. My name is Mark Kalina. So Mark Kalina Junior Foundation was found um after I experienced a train pedestrian accident that resulted in the loss of both of my legs. Uh going through that process of recovery, we noticed the gap. And that's um this project is to address that gap by providing a temporary housing option for those that have um survived a traumatic injury that has some way impacted their mobility, whether it's temporary or permanent. Uh thank you. Greg, it's up to you now.
All right. So um we are on East Seventy-Ninth Street here, um just north of Carnegie. Uh you can see the little white square on the plan there if you go to the next um page. Uh we're looking at taking four properties that are currently vacant um east on the east side of the seventy-ninth. Um this next page, please. Um so as you can tell from the six photos here, it's just kind of a three sixty view of the property. The upper ones are looking towards the east, south, and north. Um obviously, there there's nothing there and uh across the street, there is an existing four-story, what used to be an apartment building. And and nothing much more beyond that. And so when we uh looked at developing this project, we might actually just go to the next slide, please. So here's the site plan. Um we we have five-foot setbacks on the north and the east. Um and we were told by our meeting yesterday with uh Euclid that we are going to increase our setback on the west property line from ten to fifteen. So there will be a modification there. Uh and by the way, we're looking for just conceptual review at this point. We achieved conceptual review yesterday at the meeting and and that's what we're here for today. And uh we have nineteen parking spaces on the south side. Um the entrance is in the middle of the building off the parking lot. Um and the sidewalk will connect from East Seventy-Ninth to that entrance all along the south side of the building. On the west side of the building, which is on the left side of the sheet, there is a small um kind of walkout patio um that will just be a kind of break area for people that are working P T O T in that empty space on the left side of the plan. There are nineteen units planned um in the space itself. And in the middle of the building, there will be an outdoor courtyard um to allow, obviously, to allow more daylight for the units, but also just give a place for residents um to step outside for a little bit. Couple um parking lot lights uh shown along the sidewalk there um and obviously four eighty-eight parking spaces. And then we have a small dumpster enclosure on the bottom right or southeast corner of this property. Next page, please. So here's some some conceptual renderings at this point. We're uh obviously it's single story. It's it's just over fifteen thousand square feet. Um and the materials that we're looking at would be like a brownish tan brick and then a white metal panel with a charcoal or potentially a little bit warmer um standing seat metal roof. Um good amount of glass at the corner where the offices and the P T will be. And then as we move around to the sides, we have more punched openings where the units will be. One of the comments yesterday was just to ask for the north and the east elevations. The north and east elevations will match pretty closely the rhythm that we're setting up on the south and the east elevations where the punched openings are. That'll just continue around. We're we're made aware, obviously, that this is going to be visible from pretty much three hundred sixty degrees, barring the the tree lines that are on the east side and the north side, but to the north is the uh C V S and to the east, I think, is more vacant lot. So um we are aware that all the elevations are hold importance and and we plan on continuing that rhythm around. Next slide, please. So it's just uh I mentioned the two lighting poles that exist in the parking lot and or will exist in the parking lot and then um preliminary plant uh vegetation plan, landscape plan. Next slide, please. And we just have um what we're thinking of at this point as far as what that landscaping will be and the type of light pole. We plan on using twenty-foot-high light pole. Um and then some more uh just what the landscaping will be. So that's essentially the presentation as it sits right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission members, questions?
No, uh I I move approval. It's a conceptual approval. It's a uh I think that's what it was. Yes. And um I really commend you for this mission and um and the project.
And I'll second Downing.
We have a motion, second, further discussion.
I would I would like to commend um the applicant. Uh this is my neighborhood and it's it's nice to see that the missing teeth are starting to be filled in. And 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 obviously, the commitment to being in Cleveland is goes without saying. So thank you.
So is this residence also gonna be for people with traumatic brain injuries too?
No.
No.
Okay. So this is physical injuries?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Great presentation. So in great use. So uh I've called a question. Michael, call the role, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker. Yes. Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Looking forward to seeing your next presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um okay, everyone, take a look. Southeast Design Review, new member Eugene Cranford Junior. Um Eugene, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am. Can you guys hear me?
How are you?
I am great. How are you guys doing?
Good, good. Did everyone take a look at his resume?
Yes, I move I move approval. Downing.
Second, slide.
We have a motion and second, further discussion. Michael?
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker. Yes. Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Welcome aboard, Eugene.
Thank you, guys. Good seeing a lot of you guys. Haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah, nice to see you. Thanks. The next one is Lester Kumblander. Um he gets the award for the the largest resume submitted to planning commission.
Oh, we're almost done.
I I was trying to figure out whether we were reviewing all the projects or not.
I would have to recuse myself because I actually worked on one of them with them. So. So can I get a motion to approve him? I mean, he's obviously qualified.
I move to approve Mr. Kumbalender.
We have a motion. And a second, further discussion. Call the role, please.
Bowen.
Yes. Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry. Lillian, are you there?
Yeah, sorry. I thought I was off. Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slive. Yes.
Uh, welcome aboard, Lester. Okay, we're moving on to the director's report.
Yes, can everyone hear me? Okay.
I can hear just fine.
Great. And Maurice, is it okay if I share my screen, please? Okay, there's a couple of.
You should be able to, can, can, you should be able to share your screen. Sorry, I didn't realize I was muted.
Can you guys see it now?
Not yet.
Okay, it's coming up shortly.
Yep, now it's coming up.
Great. So I wanna uh, take this opportunity to give you guys a couple of updates uh, on a number of projects uh, that we're working on. In addition, uh, we're gonna have a planning adoption marathon this summer, uh, given a lot of the work and it's gonna take a lot of coordination uh, with respect to uh, how we conduct our meetings. But I'm gonna go through and give you uh, some of these project updates. Our staff has been extremely busy uh, over the last uh, few years. Uh, some of these projects are ongoing that's scheduled to be wrapped up this year or have been uh, wrapped up. Uh, but one of the things that we've been working on is the American Rescue Recovery Plan with members of the administration. Uh, that's taken up a lot of my uh, time and we actually did a Facebook Live outlining the actual initiatives that uh, we're gonna be looking to uh, spend uh, federal dollars on uh, to advance uh, projects here in Cleveland. And um, we can send you a link to that uh, Facebook Live uh, presentation uh, if you'd like to dig deeper into that. Uh, we are also uh, partnering with uh, local agencies here around uh, strategic infrastructure uh, projects and making sure that we are all on the same page with understanding the uh, initiatives that we want to um, spend uh, infrastructure dollars that are coming um, on. Um, this is also kind of connected to the American uh, uh, Rescue Plan as well. And these specifics uh, we can also share with you guys. Another thing that we continue to work on is the Marriage Neighborhood Transformation Initiative where we've seen tremendous results in Glenville. The demographics have changed tremendously in Glenville. Uh, with, since we've been investing in the Glenville community, we have noticed an increase in the private market. Um, uh, fewer vacant homes, uh, infill um, investments and a number of different demographic characteristics that have advanced uh, that community. You have all heard about the Woodland Hills Choice uh, initiative and we are very grateful to uh, HUD uh, for uh, this allocation. Um, now that we have the resources, the real work uh, has to be done. There are two projects that are actually uh, going to be um, in the construction phases very soon, uh, which is the Shaker Boulevard T O D uh, project. That's part of this as well as the project that we discussed earlier today. Planning Commission has seen and approved both. The other uh, component to this is the Buckeye Road Refresh um, as part of the Transformation Initiative. There are a number of infrastructure uh, projects that are associated with that initiative. Buckeye Road Rehabilitation is one of those. Um, we just completed a T O C I. There's uh, five point seven uh, million dollars that's devoted to the implementation associated with this, uh, not to mention the additive resources that could result uh, from the uh, American Rescue Plan or Jobs Plan. So the uh, conversation, many of you remember yesterday's dialogue that we had with respect to T O C I's. Um, you know, they are important when they're resource and when they're uh, there's a commitment and and trying to make sure that that implementation uh, matches what the desires are is really important for us. And we see that this will be a tremendous opportunity to realize some of those things. The other uh, component that we're working on um, uh, as a result of COVID nineteen, many of you know that uh, the city uh, has implemented guidelines uh, for the um, outdoor dining. Um, outdoor dining is uh, popular in a couple of districts and there is obviously gonna be discussions about whether or not this remains uh, post the lifting of these uh, restrictions that exist. So this was a COVID response. But this also speaks to the need and desire for how we need to rethink our streets. Um, so we see it as a precursor uh, to that, you know, conversation. Um, we're working with uh, C N P and others to look at a uh, parklet design uh, concept that could be standard for businesses across the city. Um, so stay tuned for that, but this is something that uh, some critical decisions are gonna need to be made in order, excuse me, to address this. The other initiative that has been very successful, um, between the Woodland Hills Estates and uh, some of the uh, activities in Huff as well as Clark Fulton, uh, been here about twenty years and I've seen many projects, but uh, the, those three have engaged the community at a clip that uh, is, is really phenomenal and at a level uh, that's very uh, grassroots. And there was a lot of patience involved with these projects and non-traditional actors have come together. So uh, the draft plan of this is complete, um, which we'll uh, share with commission members. Uh, obviously, this plan will come before us for adoption. Um, it's a partnership between the City of Cleveland, um, Metro Hospital, the Cleveland Foundation, uh, as well as Metro uh, West Development Corporation and Councilwoman Santana's office. Uh, we had the commencement week uh, last week where uh, the plan was unveiled um, and shared with the public. Uh, great attendance in the Clark uh, Fulton neighborhood. So we're really excited about this, this effort. Um, also, uh, as you know, we just came off of the building, the Twenty-First Century City uh, Symposium uh, back in March. Um, we are working with Leon Wilson and a few others to uh, finish off the development of a report um, that really highlights the uh, key takeaways and uh, ideas from the Symposium. Um, and that will lead to the phase two of this initiative, which is the ideation uh, phase and also serving as a precursor to help uh, inform our comprehensive plan update. Um, the shared mobility uh, efforts that uh, we are leading um, um, in the city. Uh, shared mobility, uh, we believe is gonna be here for a while. Um, the scooter program has been successful even through COVID. And it also um, really takes advantage of the investments that we're making uh, in our trail networks and trail systems. Uh, so multimodal uh, options uh, for people, particularly uh, as it relates to getting out now and being able to recreate. Um, we are starting to see a spike in the use of shared mobility devices. Um, we are just initiated the Vision Zero Action Plan. Um, the Vision Zero Action Plan is critical um, to um, eliminate uh, fatal injuries from um, individuals uh, having to interact with uh, a number of road users. And uh, we are uh, doing the citywide uh, Vision Zero Action Plan um, as part of a um, collection of uh, organizations that are committed to helping us to rethink how we do our infrastructure to ensure that traffic fatalities are minimized. Um, as you know, about a year or so ago, we introduced this notion of Twenty-First Century Streets and looking at how we can really start to invest in streets in a way that not only caters to vehicles, uh, but uh, also looks at uh, bikes and other modes of transportation as well as utilizing our streets for alternative uses. Um, this is indicative of uh, efforts like the Sixty-Sixth Street uh, effort. Um, Grace Calucci at Nowaka has also uh, aligned and adopted that the mindset of wanting to try to pilot and establish uh, streets in Cleveland that really exemplify the future of how infrastructure is gonna be uh, needed to be thought about. And uh, we believe that Sixty-Sixth Street is gonna be one of those streets where we have the true, true opportunity to demonstrate that. Um, also, this has uh, uh, led to the conversations around uh, uh, travel, vehicular travel and the transition that most car companies are gonna be taking over the next decade uh, with the electrification of all of their fleets. The City of Cleveland itself is uh, in the process of looking at uh, transferring its fleet to more of an electric uh, uh, fleet. Um, we do have some electric vehicles, uh, but in the future, um, as we continue to analyze this, that will probably increase uh, because the cost savings associated with this uh, could be substantial uh, for the city. Uh, the BikeWay uh, Master Plan, uh, really looking at trying to capitalize on vertical infrastructure throughout the city and making sure that we're able to remain uh, or keep moving up the competition ladder um, with respect to multimodal transportation. The Detroit Superior Bridge is one of the conversations that we're having in partnership with the uh, city, uh, the county, Nowaka and others uh, regarding uh, options for the underbelly of the Detroit Superior Bridge and also the Memorial Trail Loop that would connect Ohio City uh, to downtown. Uh, you know, via a uh, trail network that uh, links the Detroit Superior Bridge, DeLorean Bridge, Twenty-Fifth Street, Huron and Ontario. Um, we also are uh, continuing to work on uh, countywide branding uh, for our trail networks um, as part of the Kaahoga Greenways Group. Um, where uh, every municipality uh, in the footprint of Kaahoga County and some other uh, organizations are coming together. That includes the Metro Park to look at how we can really connect our greenways. And then uh, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about um, two of the biggest catalytic uh, sort of infrastructure projects uh, that are on the table right now, which is the Lorraine Cycle Track and the Midway uh, Cycle Track. Um, both have some funding committed. Um, we're gonna be looking for opportunities to close the gap on these two uh, projects uh, via some of the resources that you're hearing about. Uh, the Opportunity Corridor uh, effort is obviously continuing. Uh, we're uh, getting a number of different development proposals in. Um, but just the, the labor of matching those development proposals to the vision is something that's really important. Thrive One O Five is an effort we're continuing to work on. Uh, there's a twenty million dollar state infrastructure bank allocation that's uh, uh, in place if the city takes it to uh, advance the Drive One O Five Initiative. Uh, this corridor, you know, links Glenville, it links the Woodland Hills Estates and it links a lot of east side neighborhoods, which has been a priority of the administration. Uh, we've talked about uh, the comprehensive plan update, which we're gonna probably fund totally in-house. Uh, so we may not need any uh, uh, outside resources, but we'll need outside capacity um, in order to uh, conduct the uh, plan update. And then just a, a last couple here is the Vision Further Valley, which I wanna highlight. We are looking to adopt that uh, chairman and planning commission uh, members on July sixteenth. Um, which will be uh, coming up very soon. Uh, so uh, we'll probably be having or looking to have an in-person meeting uh, off-site uh, for that, but July sixteenth is the day that we uh, uh, have elected to do that. Um, you all have seen uh, as the introductory uh, component, the lakefront connector. So it's just really about uh, connecting to the waterfront. Um, Charles, uh, Commission Member Slive had uh, mentioned the tree canopy uh, efforts. And uh, I will definitely uh, be willing to give the presentation from a process standpoint about how we govern uh, when uh, permits are submitted in order to uh, uh, increase tree canopy in the city. Uh, Canal Basin Park obviously is, is extreme, uh, extremely important, particularly given the fact that the last leg of the uh, tow path trail will end up here. Um, uh, also, as the census numbers roll out, because they're gonna be uh, obviously rolling out soon. Um, this is gonna have some implications for council. Um, and uh, it's gonna have a, a number of different implications for the city. And when we get those final numbers, we will share that with the planning commission. And forgive me for going fast, uh, because I know that uh, we have the opportunity to uh, in, in a timely fashion today and I wanna stay true to that. Um, and then, of course, the form-based zoning, the land code initiative. Um, right now, we're uh, closing, uh, starting to close out our engagement in the Huff community. Uh, and uh, to Lillian's point earlier, um, uh, engagement has been very key, uh, particularly with the youth in Huff. And um, we've done a number of uh, neighborhood tours and are kind of finalizing the map. The one thing that we're gonna have to uh, ensure that we do hopefully pretty efficiently is the law review. And that's really what we're about to go into now, the law review of the, the uh, code itself. Um, which obviously is going to be a back and forth, uh, because this is a wholesale change uh, with each one of these uh, particular districts. And then, of course, design review, uh, continuing to enhance that. The form-based zoning is gonna impact design review, uh, we believe in a positive way, uh, because it's going to uh, create a scenario where um, we will be codifying uh, much of the um, uh, activity or uh, recommendations that we often have to uh, advocate for. Um, and then lastly, um, the uh, Sherwin-Williams uh, H Q, um, that's gonna be coming before us soon. Um, so stay tuned for that and that's probably gonna be happening also this summer. So just wanted to give you some quick updates on some of the projects. And uh, David, that's uh, all I have for now on those project updates. Uh, but I wanted to discuss the uh, executive session piece as well.
Yeah, so um, we haven't ever with this group gone into executive session. There is uh, our ability to go into executive session. You've seen other groups do it. It's for a variety of reasons. Some of it is, you know, process reasons and, you know, I know August, you've brought up a lot of things about process um, as they're going through those type of things. Um, so it's appropriate for us to go into a, an executive session. And I think Freddie, you have it set up that we can do that today, right? Go into executive session. So this will be our first one. We would need a motion to go into executive session in a second and then vote on it. Go into executive session. We have to come out with the meeting still going on before we close the meeting. They have set it up electronically that we go into basically a separate room. And then we come back into the main room again. So can I get a motion to go into executive session?
And David, if I can explain, because I wanna be grossly transparent about.
Sure, go ahead.
Because uh, obviously, we have media and others who participate in these meetings. And I wanna be sure that people understand that A, we know what we're doing. B, that uh, we operate above board. So I wanna kind of read off to you um, literally from the um, chapter uh, of the uh, Ohio Open Meeting Law with respect to executive sessions and how they run typically, since we just don't do them uh, typically. Uh, so with the executive session, uh, it's a portion of a open meeting from which the public can be excluded. Uh, proper procedure is required to move into executive session. The meeting must begin and end in an open session where public may be present. Motion on the record to move into executive session followed by a second. Specific reason for executive session must be put in the motion and recorded. Roll call vote must be approved by a majority of a quorum of the public body, which we are the public body. Executive session can only be held for one of the following reasons. One, certain personnel matters. Two, purchase or sale of property. Three, pending or imminent uh, court action. Four, collective bargaining matters. Five, matters required to be kept confidential. So that's very broad. Um, six, security matters. Seven, hospital trade secrets. Eight, confidential business information of an applicant for economic development assistance. Nine, veteran service commission applications. And then lastly, discussion in the executive session must be limited to the specific statutory reason for the executive session as set forth in the motion. And we are requesting this executive session uh, for the purposes of uh, to discuss personnel uh, matters and also procedural matters. So those are the two reasons why we wanna go into executive session, because there are certain things that we should not be discussing on record that have had uh, some open discussion.
So can you, can I get a motion for those two items? Anyone?
I'll make the motion.
You have a motion. Can I get a second? Anyone?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Further discussion? Michael, call the role.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
No.
Flucker.
No.
Curry.
I'm going to abstain.
Paul.
Yes.
And Slive.
Yes.
So what was it, three to two?
I have three, three yeses, two no's, and an abstention.
So the motion carries to go into executive session.
Just to clarify, does it care? I thought it was a majority of quorum.
Was it three to two?
Four. Well, with the abstention though, that says there's six votes.
Says roll call vote must be approved by the majority of a quorum of the public body.
So does that make it three to three because there was an abstention? Or does that make it three to two, the one abstained? Where's the legal beagle in all this?
Well, we don't have a law department representative present.
Is there, Director, is there a time sensitivity that, yeah, I, because obviously I think that we hear some, you know, misgivings from members. Is this something that we could get a little more information on just procedurally? And then it could be addressed at after a later meeting?
We could provide you with the actual Ohio Open Meeting Law information itself.
I mean, there's a lot of commissions that do this. As a matter of fact, a lot of planning commissions around the states do it all the time.
Every, every board and commission does it. We don't do it. We have not.
Two of the other people in my office are on different planning commissions, and they do it every session.
I can tell you that we do it at the Board of Zoning Appeals on a regular, regular basis.
Yes.
Yeah, my concern is that it was not part of the published agenda. And I don't feel comfortable in participating today.
I agree with Diane.
Okay.
And I think we need the law department. I think like we, we need to answer like, what is a quorum and have we followed procedure?
So Freddie, let's do this. Let's set it up for next meeting. Get the regulations to all the commission members. Get an opinion from law, which I thought you did anyhow. And then let's put it on the agenda. I mean, typically, VZA, what they do is they do it before the meeting every time. They do it at a number of the planning commissions because they usually come out after executive session. But let's set it up for the next meeting. And we've never, I mean, I don't know anyone that does it electronically yet. I've never had that experience. I've only seen it in person, so can we get that set up for the next meeting Friday?
Yeah, we'll be on the agenda for next meeting, definitely.
Does that sound good to everybody? And you'll get the information both from law and you'll get the actual regulation so you can read it yourself.
I think we have to have some more specific information on the, the items because we've never, we've never done this before or had the need.
Okay, great. We could do that.
I also think it would be good to resolve this issue of what is a quorum because this comes up a lot, especially when the people have to abstain. So I, I still don't have a clear understanding of that across the board because we don't have a full commission. We still don't have the seventh member or any alternate. So this comes up a lot, and I, I've been asking, but I also really want someone from law department to clarify this question today about what's a quorum and then what's a passing vote.
I say, Lillian, because I think part of the reason why we want to utilize the executive session option that exists for us to use is to get into those discussions.
But I think we need the law department. I mean, for my, I don't want to discuss it now, but I don't know, we've been around this so many times that we actually need the law department because we, this has been going on for so long. It's not something we can resolve without the resolution or without a full commission. Like, whichever, whoever, whoever. Commission might help, so.
And I don't see that as an item for executive session. I mean, it is what it is determined legally. It's not a discussion for a private session.
So we're getting into debate about that now, which is one of the issues that we see as, you know, problematic to have those types of exchanges in a forum that's like this. So one of the reasons why I think it's going to be necessary to begin that process of exercising the executive session opportunity is for some of those specific personnel matters because there were some personnel matters that have been discussed and some other matters that I think deem an executive session scenario in which to discuss. And this is not the forum for that.
And I think that's understandable, but I think what Diane was saying is that the question of whether, you know, the, the narrow question of the process is there's, there's no secret to that. And I think specific to Lillian's point, you know, when we, when we're meeting in person and someone needs to recuse themselves, they can physically leave the room. And it's very obvious that the quorum number changes because someone is physically absent. But as long as we're still virtual, you know, by, by Lillian having abstained or if someone recuses themselves, is, is that akin to a, a physical separation and absence of dismissal from the meeting? Or is, you know, was, was, it was essentially this last vote we took, was it three of five or three of six? And I think that's where we're not entirely clear. And so that's, I think we're just looking for a little clarification from law on like that narrow question because it has, it kind of has spillover effects on a lot of what we do.
Well, it's probably under a couple of scenarios too, because there's an abstention which is different than someone recusing themselves and leaving the table. And, and we've had that during the electronic session where they turn off their camera and they turn off their sound. And, you know, it's just a blank image. But you're exactly right.
I mean, the other one I want to know is, so we had a, we had a the, the case today where two people had to recuse themselves and there were only four voting. But if the vote had come back differently than unanimous, I, I'm not entirely clear because the idea of a quorum to me, is it just four people are voting? Or so in this case, was the quorum that, you know, how the vote came back or how many people voted? So we, we've just been asking. So this to me is like, we need some of the law department to really just come and answer these questions. Or we need to get a commission that is full and some alternates. So in advance, when we see that we have to recuse ourselves, we can be sure, and it's our responsibility to alert the chair that, that there needs to be some additional members or alternate so that we have a quorum. So that's the kind of process that I would like.
Yeah, so, so Lillian, you're exactly right. Now, some of the things we already know, but we can get in writing from law. I mean, when someone recuses themselves and leaves the table, they are no longer counted. They are outside the count. When you just abstain, you're still inside the count, but you're not voting. So, you know, like when you abstained today, that's, I believe, technically, you know, six people. So it's a three to three vote, but you abstained. So then the other question that you raised was you had two for, two against and, and three, four. Your abstention, does that count as something different, which it should? So it seems like it would be the majority, but you're right. Let's get, let's get it from law because that's, that's the most unusual vote that I've seen in 25 years.
Okay, and then let me, let me also, you know, state this. Everything that you just mentioned, Lillian, Charles, everyone, there's nothing wrong with what you're saying. Part of the conversation is, should the public meeting during the time that we're reviewing cases and handling the business of the city be the forum to hash that out? I personally do not believe that. Now, the other component of this, and it states very specifically regarding the matters that should be discussed associated with the meeting. And I just read them off, and I did that intentionally so that we can get an understanding of what that is. But I will send that out. For example, personnel matters is not a matter of the planning commission's purview with respect to a, an open meeting. That should be discussed in a private session if it's that important to be discussed. And it's matters like that that we have to make sure that we're managing appropriately. And the reason why I'm going to be extremely transparent from now on so that people are very clear with respect to the way in which we're doing things and that it is by the book. It come, had come up around a special meeting situation that we had a month ago, which we did everything by the book. But that did not stop what was in print. So I want to just be very clear and transparent and intentional about what we do, why we do it, and what gives us the authority to do so.
Mr. Collier, I just wanted to point out one thing, and I, I don't disagree with what's been said by anyone on this call. I think the issue I'm having personally is the timing, you know. You know, we're talking about going into executive session and we don't even know, we're supposed, we're supposed to go into executive session. Not, I'm not questioning whether that we can. What I'm questioning is the timing and whether it's being prepared as such, just like the special meeting. That was a timing thing, in my opinion. It was, you know, essentially the Friday before the Monday. So that's, that's what causes me concern, okay? And I was out of town that day, so I'm on the road. So, you know, that's, that's the concern I have.
Yeah, so, and thank you for that. And just with that special meeting, the requirement is such that it's a 24-hour period, which is the, what's required. And that was what was done in that scenario, given what was requested from the administration and others. So it's very important that people understand that procedurally, we follow the procedures by the book as what we were allowed to do. And that's what we executed. And it's discussion like that and like this that we're having that are very productive, you know, and healthy for the commission. The conversation I'm seeking is when and in what form should that be? And we do have very clear directions and an opportunity to be able to have that, you know, discussion as a committee because again, we can't come together outside of a board or commission meeting. So it would violate sunshine laws. And that's in part, I think, why the executive session, open meeting scenario exists is to allow for some of those detailed discussions to be had within the space of a meeting. And I've been on a number of boards and have experienced that. So this is why it's being brought forth because we've never utilized that option at the planning commission, at least not since I've, I've been, you know, with the city at, at all, even in other capacities. So I'm bringing that forth as a option to utilize that function to be able to discuss certain matters that I articulated with respect to the Ohio Open Meetings Law.
So I guess our next step is, Freddie, you're going to get the information to the commission members. We'll get the determinations in writing from law, from law, so they can read that too. And then the next time we have something that we want to put on exec, executive session, we will put that on the agenda after the Director's Report so we can move into the executive session. Does that sound fair to everybody?
David, could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Director, I know you can't obviously get into the details of what, what a personnel issue would be. And I'm not asking you to do that, but since, since there are people on that are, you know, would not be in that executive session, I just want to ask, does planning commission have any authority as it comes to, you know, hiring and terminating employees? I, I would have been under the assumption that we do not. And, and I guess I'm just trying to understand that, that, trying to confirm that that would not be the nature of, of a, of a personnel discussion in executive session.
Yeah, I can do a little bit more research that, but any, you know, personnel matter, I think when you think about hiring or, you know, employee status, things of that nature would fall under certain personnel matters. So there's always that ambiguity with, you know, the legality of things. And I think that's where we have to, you know, kind of drill down and say, okay, well, what does this constitute? Because the term certain personnel matters, certain can mean a number of things, right? Just like it says here, matters required to be kept confidential. Well, what really does that mean? So it's, it's those types of things that I think we need to, you know, get clarity on. But I hear your point. So we can drill down on that a little bit more about what that, what's the extent of that when we talk about personnel matters?
Yeah, and I'd like to, go, it's, go ahead, Charles.
Oh, I was just thinking that people, it's, it sounds, just saying, we need to talk in secret because of personnel matters. It sounds, I could see where people could get a little anxious over that. So I was, I was trying to, yeah, I would, I would not personally think that we as the planning commission that have the ability over that, that type of personnel decision. To me, that seems a matter of the administration's civil service, but that, that, that was really the root of the question.
So, so Charles, as you know, the only, the only person that we participate in is the planning director. So we make a recommendation, the mayor approves it, unlike the other directors, which are put forth by the mayor and confirmed by council.
I, I agree, David, with your outlining of, of, of kind of next steps.
Okay, all right. So.
Okay, so Freddie, you're done. Commission members, enjoy your wet weekend. It's starting to be really wet around here, I can tell. And I'll adjourn the meeting.
And great pace of the meeting today. That was very efficient.
Good job.
Thank you.
Happy Father's Day, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.